Being 7:37, I'm gonna open our meeting for tonight with the CPC. We are being recorded for multi-faceted things. And Debbie? You laugh no more than that. Alright, so, minutes. A motion for the minutes, please sir.
Yeah, I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to approve the minutes of January 3rd, 2023 as written.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And we're all present, so we do not have to do a roll call vote, correct?
There is someone on the Zoom.
Yes, but no, I mean, there are no members on the Zoom though. I thought it was only if members were on the Zoom.
Oh, I thought it was...oh, you may be right. Actually, I didn't realize that. I assumed it was anyone, okay.
Ryan is absent.
Ryan is absent.
Okay.
So unanimous with Mr. Carroll being absent. Yes, Ms. Spears, do you have a question?
No. You're right. We're all here.
Right. Are there any CBAs?
No.
I'm going to the bottom because we can't do anything.
I can do updates if you want, I just have a few.
Whatever you want.
We got the Hopkinton thing, what is that?
Oh, I can bring that up now.
Yeah, that's an easy one maybe.
Yeah, because it's kind of in the context of the Anthony Road subdivision, that's why it came in, but it's not about that project specifically. So I know in the past Deputy Galvin has expressed concern that, you know, the fire code doesn't really enable him to do as much as he would like as far as driveway widths. And I did suggest to him that that, this might be something that, you know, if he wants to attend a meeting in the future, we could schedule it and really talk through it together. But I said I would pass this along in the meantime. It's, I think we've seen this before, it's a policy that Hopkinton uses. It's not so much a bylaws as it is a policy that their fire department has in place to request driveway widths of, you know, a certain width and with clear shoulder space, which I think we did in our last subdivision at his request. And he was asking for something similar to be done for the Anthony Road subdivision and in general, to be part of the subdivision regulations. I don't know how, whether we want to address that as part of subdivision regulations, but it's something we can look at, maybe discuss with Deputy Galvin if he wants to come in for a meeting at some point in the future, but I wanted to pass it along because he gave it to us.
Ms. Spears?
The 12-foot require, big difference between, I think we actually have 12-foot driveways, but the big difference is they do require two feet on each side. That's, that's the big difference between what they, yeah, what they got and what we got. And I think that's really good because that means you got snow storage, first of all, so you can maintain that 12-foot. So I read through it, I kinda, I liked it. The fire code actually says, NFPA says 18 feet, but that's more roadways than driveways, but it doesn't say that.
Right.
It just says 18 feet.
Right.
So that's where when we, years ago when we started this whole thing, the fire department came in, that's what they wrote, they wanted 18 feet. I'm like, I don't know, we can't.
That's awful lot of asphalt for a driveway, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I think we, I think that we were to adopt or, you know, emulate that to some extent, that regulation. I think that two feet on each side, that gives it a snow storage place guaranteed you got the 12 feet, I think would be good and better to the fire department.
Right.
And I, and I think it's a safety thing, and I think we ought to do it.
So what, do we, we have a standard though, in the zoning bylaw?
Yeah, we want 12-foot wide drive.
Meaning, is it as comprehensive as this, or is it just a?
We don't have, we don't have a minimum or a maximum driveway width right now in our subdivision regulations. I just, it's not, it's just not addressed. So as we're looking at our subdivision regulations, if we want to put one in, I think that that's something we could talk about. And I did actually also want to mention, I know we started looking at the subdivision regulations a really long time ago. And we did the first part of the review with a consultant, but we didn't have a town engineer, and now we do. So now that Dan has joined, I'll be meeting with him and, because I didn't think there was much of a point in changing our subdivision regulations without the input of a town engineer and then have someone come in and say, hey, that really doesn't work for us. So I think now that Dan is here, we can start working on this. I think this is one of those things that, you know, we should talk about as part of the regulations.
A lot of the, a lot of the houses that are close to the street actually have two driveways wide right to the street.
Just about.
Yeah, so that they can basically, so they can pull both cars, so they can line cars up for the driveway.
So, because they can't back out a long driveway either?
Yeah, well, you know.
Nobody would drive up my driveway.
That's what we see, so.
I like the...
I read through it, I think it's, I think it's pretty good, I think we should do it.
Yeah.
I also like the permeable paper thing, that's come up on a few of my projects where it's the backside of a building, you need the access, and again, they have the discretion and it needs to be load-bearing, but you can put that, the different grasscrete, different products in the back there. So you get some credit on the permeability of the surface, you know, for your stormwater cowlings. But, and it's, you know, it's nicer looking too, so it can just be kind of grass back there, but it can certainly support a fire.
I have it at my house.
Yeah, no, it's a smart, so that has that in here, that's good, so this, this is good.
We do that stuff, you just have to have the correct base put down.
Subbase, yeah.
If you, if you put the wrong base down, it's worthless.
Muck and mire.
Right.
I'm just, I'm not, I'm not really sure how, what the lifespan is of that, what the effective lifespan of that is.
Mine's been down for, I can figure it out, like 20, 20 years?
Permeous pavement?
Permeous pavement is what the, the creek.
Still draining?
It's still, yeah, still drains. I have, if there's no car parked on it, I've got grass growing on it or moss growing on it, one or the other. And it doesn't run off into the, matter of fact, I've got a problem with the grass dying on the little hill because the sun just beats it up, because all the water goes down.
But the concrete stuff does degrade over time a little bit, it hits and everything, but it's four inches thick and...
Yeah.
The stuff I've seen looks pretty good, but they also have the plastic product, which is more of a, you know, a type of like cone type product that will not really fall apart, you know, due to the weather assault and all, not that you're salting your permeable papers, but, but those last a pretty long time too. But it is all of what you use for fill and subbase.
Right, it's all the subbases.
Yeah, if you just throw that down on mud or clay, it's just gonna sink in the ground really.
Right. I actually hired, that's one of the things, I hired someone to come in to put that base down for me correctly, and he did.
That's good. Yeah, that's, that's pretty comprehensive too.
Yeah. No, they did a nice job on this. The pullouts, you know, they go to 500-foot length, so we've had some houses with long driveways and we've always worried about that. You know, what do you do when you got a car to pass or an emergency vehicle that needs to pass? You get an ambulance in close, then you got a fire truck, you gotta be able to pass at some point, so.
Okay, well, we can talk about that more. I will start moving ahead the subdivision regulation review, but like I said, my next step should be the meeting with the new town engineer, and then I expect us to be able to discuss it a bit more, because I'd really like to start, you know, making some changes and finish that project up. Just some other things, I have a few deadlines that are coming up that are just, just kind of related to things that I've been working on. Two of them are related to Mass Works this year, that application round is open now. So what exactly the project is and how it gets asked for hasn't been decided yet, but I'm assuming I'll be asked to help with an application with something related to sewer. There's a March 17th deadline for a statement of interest, and then a June 2nd deadline for the full application, so I'll expect to be, you know, working on that a bit as we kind of, as this evolves. And the, there is also a, an application round open right now for the housing choice designation. This is something that's different from the MBTA communities, but it's kind of part of the same legislation. This is something that's, it's voluntary and communities qualify for it by having issued a certain number of building permits in the last five years, and we have not in the past qualified for it, but this year we do actually qualify. And we don't really have to do much except submit the application with the building permit information, and we become eligible for a pretty good range of grants. So it's good to be a housing choice community designated, because you do get higher points on things like Mass Works and other grant programs, you can actually get better borrowing rates for certain kinds of bonds, it does a lot for the towns, so, and we don't, we're not obligated to do anything other than apply, and we've already done the issuance of the building permits that's required. So I'll be working on that, that deadline is coming up March 3rd. And I think I may have mentioned this last time, but we're just continuing to work on the MBTA Communities project. I met with our GIS coordinator, Mike, we're gonna be running the compliance model together, and that's the set of instructions that the state provides to help us kind of analyze whether the areas we've chosen really do work. So I've started the earliest steps of that, and I can already see it may be an issue, we had been targeting the 104 and 100 Lowell Road properties. The one thing that may complicate the plan is that those are in the Aquafor Protection District, which limits development to 15% impervious, or you can get a special permit. Now, both of those properties are already developed with much more than that, because they're already built out. So I'm trying to find a way that maybe we can slightly revise that bylaw, or maybe we can make some type of exception for those two properties, because otherwise it might be difficult for us to make the case that we can use those as our eligible zoning districts for the MBTA communities.
What percentage do they, do they cover right now?
So Polte is permitted for, I think, 29%, and Edgewood, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it is more than 15%.
More than 15?
It is already more, yeah. And both of them would have already received that permit in the past, so just trying to figure out if there's some way for those two properties to be able to bypass another special permit, because if they need a special permit, they're not gonna be able to qualify as our eligible districts. Wilmington is actually having the same problem, because a lot of their eligible area is surrounding their, their train station, but much of it is in an Aquafor Protection District also. So they're really struggling, because they may not be able to actually do it. So I've been in contact with, you know, the other communities, and we're trying to figure out some answers on this, so just continue to work on it, and I'll keep you, I'll keep you posted as we make some progress. Just wanna see if there's anything.
Come up with this great stuff, which kind of...
I'm sorry?
The state likes to come up with these great ideas, which...
So the question, the problem is that our Aquafor Protection bylaw says 15%.
Right.
And we actually have already exceeded that, so we're already doing what they want us to do.
In a way, yeah. We are.
Yeah, but because we have the bylaw that says 15%, the bylaws are gonna hold us back, not the actual building. We actually exceeded that already.
Right.
Yeah, you're right. But, but I'm hopeful that what we can do about this is we can put some type of exception into this overlay district, into the bylaw, that says that if you already have a developed site that exceeds this amount, that you don't need another special permit. I'm hoping we can do that.
Can we actually put, in other words, in order to, you know, I would, I'd rather put a blanket exception in. Could we actually, could we target that exception to this MBTA ruling?
I think we probably could.
Because if we do that, if we do that, it shows intent to, to...
Yeah.
...answer the ruling that they're delaying to put out there, first of all.
Right.
And, and, and second of all, it doesn't open the door for things randomly coming in.
Right, and we don't want that to...
I think that's how we do it.
Yeah, I think so too, and I don't, we don't want it to apply to any other properties. These two are already built, so we're less concerned about them, but, yeah, I think we should do that.
They already have all their permits and stuff, so.
They do.
Yeah.
That's the answer.
It's just, it's just, it's just a name on the permit really, is what it is. An extra name that they would have put on if they had known it originally, because we would have asked them to do that.
Well, Polte definitely has an Aquafor Protection District special permit, they got that when they...
Right.
...did their permitting. For Edgewood, maybe it was part of the 40R process, I'm not sure, must have been.
Had to be.
Had to have been, yeah. So, and that's all I have for now. Probably on time, not quite eight.
We have eight minutes to, eight minutes to eight.
Oh, you know what, why don't I talk about the other two things under Old New Business? So I put a copy of, I don't know if you'll be able to...
Yes ma'am?
Hi.
A meeting?
Is this...
You looking for a planning board?
Yes, looking for the planning.
What, what are you coming for? Because there's one, one that got postponed or pushed off.
Well, Anthony Road.
Anthony Road, yeah, that's the one that's been...
It's been postponed.
Yeah, it wasn't them, it was us, I think. We missed an advertising period, so we have to advertise it for so many days, and we only were able to do, they did it once, not twice, and I'm not sure exactly what happened.
We'll have to re-advertise it, but we'll be sending another letter to all the abutters. I think, did we decide on February?
Watch the Bruins!
I think we decided, I think they're gonna have it on the 28th. We're gonna have it on the 28th of...
February.
February.
Okay.
Alright?
We'll send another letter.
Sorry.
I had a feeling, that's why I kinda...
Yeah.
No, no, that's, you can see at the hall.
That's to let people know.
That's perfect.
I feel like we were in the middle talking about...
You're just gonna start something.
Oh, yeah, so the other two things I had under Old New Business, Abacus has given me their final report, I hope you've been able to open it, it's huge, so if you're trying to open it on the iPad...
I have looked at it, I looked at it quickly, didn't read the whole thing, yeah.
Okay, I mean, I, it's, it's sort of given to us from the position of, this is the work that we've done, and when the town is ready to take some next steps on it, this is what we recommend that you do. I thought that that was a good way for them to wrap it up. If you have any concerns about it, let me know, and I, I mean, they've been very flexible about...
It's a big file, I have to...
Yeah, it's 21 meg.
It's huge, it's huge.
Yeah, I've got the...
Yeah, the spinning.
I've got the spin, I'm loading, oh, there it goes, I got, I got loaded.
Yeah. So it goes through all the different options we talked about, all the different considerations.
It's nothing new, man.
No, you've seen it all before, I did have them updated based on the more recent sewer activity, so that it didn't, it wasn't so outdated, but this is where we are.
Yeah, if I had full confidence in that coming out, what would I do?
Yeah?
See how that goes.
Yeah, it just takes like five minutes.
Okay.
Not even that, because I'm all, I'm totally loaded up now. Well, no, I'm not. If you go to the, if you're looking at the end, you're not gonna get it right away.
Yeah.
And it's just dropping now.
Yeah.
Just takes a little time, we're on wifi, so. What else you got there?
Oh, I see MBTA Communities update is on there, is our running agenda item, but I already just gave you the update on that, so I don't have anything else to say about it.
Yeah, it would be good if we can figure out how to do that with those two properties, because...
Yeah, yeah. So far, that Aquafor Protection question is the only issue I've really come across as I, because the compliance model makes you describe every zoning district, it makes you talk about, you know, the size of the property, and they, they do a whole analysis for you, they give us the shape files with all the sensitive lands that are already taken out. So I'm gonna be working with my GIS guy on it.
So they're actually helping?
Yeah, yeah, they actually, yeah, they do provide a lot of information. It's a lot of work though, but we'll...
Do they actually get their rules and regulations all done on time, like they said they were going to?
I mean, they have rules and regulations, it's just understanding it all, it's, it's a lot, it's just a lot.
They don't have the clip notes set yet.
Not exactly.
Hey Brad?
We could spend, well, yeah, you probably wanna continue the public hearing at 8:00, but between 8:00 and 8:30, if we wanna talk about the ADU bylaw, we could do that too.
Yeah, we got five minutes before 8 o'clock, so.
Okay.
You got nothing else for your regular notes?
Um...
Anything else going on in town that we don't know about? It's okay.
Yeah, that's about it.
Do we have any ice rinks in town?
Excuse me?
Any ice rinks?
Ice rinks, no. Many people would like one, but very expensive.
The two closest would be, you go to Phillips and Dover, there's the twin rinks there.
You got Yandover, you got, and you've got Redding Rink on Haggel Street. You got one in Peabody.
Peabody's not too bad, yeah, that's small sheet ice, kinda like Redding's and Dover.
You can play hockey on it.
Big ice.
Oh, yeah, they got huge ice.
It's a big Olympic-sized rink in the sense of...
Yeah, I saw North Andover built an outdoor rink in one of their parks.
Did they?
Big, big, open one.
Yeah. And then Redding downtown here, up 28, did that park, if you get the name, they flood that, it's a little, it's a little crazy, the girls love it.
If the weather was better, they'd flood Ipswich now too, right?
Yeah.
Right in that front there, they flood that, you go skating on it.
I would teach a two-year-old how to skate.
I think Redding, they'll hope to continue.
You trying to teach them how to skate?
I'd like to get a three-year-old on skate, yeah.
So the place, they do a lot, I think they do a bunch of...
Oh, yeah? I played two little... Can beat you up pretty good.
Right on the wall, Wall Street. Blake went by several years.
Yeah, notice it, the camera goes in, zoom is right on you, even every time...
It was kind of the north Atlantic, runs there, but I think they did a lot of other smaller ones.
Yeah, I know.
I walked by the other day in Park Street, they have an outdoor rink, they're usually a rental, five toddler size, which is a little bit big for a...
Hello!
A lot of the learned escape programs are three-year-olds and older.
Right.
I'm trying to get her out of it.
A little bit earlier.
Yeah.
That's alright, let's roll that. Yes? I have two minutes. We're just gonna announce it.
Right, oh, that's right, because we're not even...
Can't open it.
We're not continuing, we're just saying, we're just...
I can't even open it.
Right, right.
So this is the Park Street one?
No, it's, it's the one for Anthony Road.
Okay.
Oh, and look who's here. Are you good now?
From one meeting to the next.
Yes.
Isn't it fun?
Huh?
Isn't it fun?
It's so much fun. Everybody should do it.
I've done it. Warren, I'm sure Warren has done it a few times.
Yeah, I'm not, not late.
No.
Didn't I see it? Hi.
Folks, are you here for the Anthony Road?
Yes.
That, we're not gonna hold that public hearing tonight, it's gonna be, I believe, the 28th of February. We didn't get all the, the proper notifications out, so we can't hold that meeting tonight, and we will not hold the meeting tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
Be another notice as to when?
There'll be another notice, yes.
Okay.
Alright?
Alright, I'm sorry.
But we're, I'm not gonna be here, because I'm gonna be away, but February the 28th is the date that...
Yeah, we'll be here.
We'll be here.
That date is gonna be, these, these three folks are gonna be here, and three's enough for this...
Sorry for coming out.
Yes.
For wasting your time.
Alright, thank you.
Have a good night.
We have a couple folks on the Zoom who signed in about 8:00, so I don't know if they were able to hear what you said, I don't really wanna...
Can you communicate with them, or is it just on that mic?
Hi Dan.
Hi, are you able to hear us at home?
I heard what you said, you said rescheduling the meeting about the Anthony Road issue to February 28?
Yes, we will send out another notice.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you! I talk pretty loud.
Yeah, that sounded really clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was very clear.
It's much better than the last time.
Yeah.
Well, they also have Zoom etiquette.
Do we wanna discuss the transportation now that Leanne is here?
Well, yeah, there's no one else in the room, and we've taken care of Zoom, if anybody comes in, we'll interrupt.
Okay.
And we'll do the, we'll do the transportation thing.
We interrupt it all the time.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure you know we're gonna interrupt you, but it's just so people don't come and sit for not, you know, not for what they're looking for, because then they don't, they're not happy.
Okay, so, last meeting, we discussed you choosing a liaison for a transportation committee that's going to be formed, and I didn't have a lot of information for you, so I got some more information together. We are about to advertise for that committee. There is going to be a select board and a CPC liaison who will be non-voting members. So basically, our job would be just to bring the information back and forth and be aware of what's going on, so when things are brought to us. It will be made up of seven voting members appointed by the select board and the town administrator, two members with three-year terms, two members with two-year terms, one member with a one-year term.
That's fine.
I believe they want to make sure that there's somebody representing the veterans, the elder services. So, I mean, basically, we all know that there's a transportation, no, a non-transportation issue in North Redding. So it will focus on understanding the current means of transportation available to North Redding residents, it will focus on optimizing the availability and awareness of current programs, since it appears education is a big part of the problem. Moving forward, they will study best practices and programs from other towns and make recommendations that may better serve the community. So, I mean, I have more information here if you would like it, but that's, that's nonsense. So we were hoping that somebody would step up and volunteer to be a liaison to that community, which won't be starting right away, it's probably not gonna be too crazy, and you're not a voting member, so, I mean, it's good to be there, but it's not like, if you're not there, you're gonna hold things up.
So Leanne, the last time we talked about this, we, I think, I thought we had a general agreement that we'll try to, like, assign a person, like, that can be, it can float who that person is, but it would be someone from the CPC, is that workable?
So that ticked over so well. I brought that up, and that ticked over so well, so they were really hoping somebody would...
Yeah.
...step up.
Well, I fit most of the criteria. A veteran?
Oh, there you go.
You could actually be on the board, Lynn, Warren.
Yeah, right.
He could be on, he could be a voting member.
You need to negotiate and get yourself a voting...
Yeah, you don't wanna, you don't wanna do that, Warren. Would you like to be the liaison to this? That, you could...
No, I don't, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't care about that. I mean, I don't necessarily feel like I need to be a voting member.
I'm only kidding anyways on that.
Who do I end up as a voting member?
Yeah.
You haven't even put this up for advertising yet, so.
No, it's about to go out.
Yeah, so, we really didn't know what it was all about until now, and, you know, you didn't either, it's not.
No, cause it's, it's new and it's being.
Right, right, so.
You've got a whole thing that I'm backing on it.
Do you have it?
Yeah, there's, like, probably have the charge in your.
Yeah, we got the charge.
Oh, okay, great.
We just got that, so.
This charge, I don't know if there's been a, a change since then, but the charge that we were given says that there are seven voting members, and that one of them is a CPC member. It says as liaison at the bottom, but it also is under voting member.
Yeah, as liaison, it's kind of, it's not well.
I was told that the select board and the CPC would have non-voting liaisons.
Okay.
That's what I was told.
Okay.
They shouldn't have, should not have been written in on this, as this subsection, because that's, it's under the voting members, it's just the way it was written.
But then who would the voting members be, two members with three-year terms, two members with two-year terms?
The other two, the other two members are three, are three.
That's five people, a select board member and a CPC, how could it be a seven member?
Right, but if you read down below, all subs, of, all subsequent terms will be three, three-year appointments. It does seem like it's a, all subsequent terms for the ones above. It does seem like the select board and the community planning commission would be a voting member. That makes seven.
I don't know if, I mean, but it says as liaison at the bottom too, so, I don't know.
But they act as a voting member and as liaison.
Yeah.
And that, that.
That might have changed since they talked, like I said, this is being formed.
Right, no, no, and, and.
It's being created, so, that could be.
That makes a difference.
It does make a difference.
You know?
Because then you really need to commit to being there if you're a voting member.
Exactly, exactly. So, I think that, we just need to get some clarification on that.
Remember this last.
You know, I think we can do that before, before you form this committee.
Do you want me to just ask, I'll just ask the town administrator what the.
So.
You see how it's kind of unclear? Their math was bad.
And three associate, associate members may be appointed.
You can have as many associate members as you want, as the select board deems, select board and the town administrator deem.
This looks like it was modeled on the charge that the EDC has, it looks like the same breakdown of membership.
The math doesn't work out in this one, cause you got the five.
Yeah, you're right, I mean, I was told non-voting, but.
That's, that does make a difference.
Yeah.
That does make a difference, we need to find that out, so.
Well, I, I'm, Warren, Lou, were you feeling like you were interested in the wedding?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, uh, I mean, this is something I, I actually care about, you know?
Yeah, it's great.
Okay, we've done such a terrible job providing transportation.
Correct, and so for it.
Yeah. You wanna throw your hat in that ring, Warren?
Right.
Do you wanna throw your hat in that ring?
Yeah, yeah.
Even if it's a voting member?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I don't have a problem with that, that's fine.
Guys are so nice, I got, I got kinda told, I mean, I feel the same way, you know, I, I'm happy to be on it.
We give money to the state and everybody else for a transportation we don't get, so.
Yeah, we really need to fight for it.
Yeah, we need to fight for it. I said, we've talked about that for a long time.
Yeah.
Different, different times when we run up against, like, how come we don't have?
Because we haven't had a committee.
We have a push cart.
We have a push cart.
They don't have enough to give us.
Yeah.
A bus. The bus goes right by us, huh?
I know, they don't have a stop, they need a stop.
Yeah.
And a place to park cars, and we've got ample parking in one place, that's never, that's never used in the afternoons, it's like, it's crazy.
So, all right, that's.
And even in the busiest time of the year, which would be Christmas time and Walmart, they don't have that much parking.
No.
Nope.
And you could designate an area or, you know, and.
Give them ten cars, probably all you need.
You're not gonna get thirty, thirty more people on the bus, but, um, so, so, how many parking spots do you think you really need?
Take that, that last line that faces Main Street.
Yeah.
Right there, there's this.
Or even the back side on the right, there's.
Yeah.
Space there.
And really, I mean, how many, a lot of those people would probably be able to be shuttled there.
Yeah.
By our town.
Yeah.
Shuttle, you know, just to be.
Now, I'm thinking of things, you know, um, um, what we already have for, for apartments and things, with people that would like to work in Boston, so, or keep driving in Boston, we find, like, part of the solution instead of part of the problem.
Yeah.
Right in downtown.
Yeah.
You know? We have a lot of reasons for them to help us.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna build, if we, if they build that park street, there's another group of people.
Yeah.
Probably like.
Right there.
Really to go to work in downtown, through the bus, probably.
And Boston's eliminating parking. If you haven't been, yeah.
What?
Yes. Parking garages are, are becoming apartment buildings and stuff like that. And they're not requiring as much parking for apartment buildings as they used to.
Wow.
Yeah. We, I look, I look at those things, you know, planning, it's all in planning. Right, Danielle? They, they are, it wasn't, there was never enough originally, and now there's even less.
Well, a lot of, a lot of the new, new planning magazine, a lot of the towns, they're purposely eliminating the parking, and they're cutting, cutting the requirements for their businesses down from, they're saying you gotta have, you know, the X number parking spot.
Yeah.
So many things, you're really gonna say, no, you only need one, you know, or half a parking spot.
Right.
They're trying to, it's part of their way of encouraging all the trans, so.
We, we're, we're not in that.
Right.
Cannot do that yet, because we don't have any really this time.
So.
All right, so that was the meeting.
Do you wanna take a vote, I think Debbie had prepared a motion.
You can. You wanna do a quick moment, can you, you can, you can, is there one there? Go ahead, put Mr. Pierce's name in, I think he's, uh, he's throwing his hat in the ring.
Okay, I move that the community planning commission vote to appoint Warren Pierce to the transportation committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Mr. Pierce? Hearing that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Is that a, four in favor and Mr.?
Carol.
Carol is absent, always have trouble with his name, I don't know why.
Well, Mr. Pierce, I would like to thank you for stepping up to that, and look forward to working with you on this.
So, if it's a voting member, he's got, the way we, the way the motion was written was kind of either or, I think. If it's just liaison, he's liaison, but if he's voting member, it's, it's, we're good with that also.
So, we have some questions on our elected officials to help with that?
Get some new people on that, the committee would be nice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you? For coming in on a Tuesday after another meeting.
And I'm gonna write down, cause I don't think that's over.
In the middle of another meeting.
There you go. You're glad for punishment, you're out of the meeting, you just sneak out the door now, you know that, we won't tell.
Thank them for letting us borrow you.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Stay safe in the next storm tomorrow, eh?
All right, well, we got seventeen minutes to our next meeting, sorry. Are you alone tonight?
Uh, Vito Olens and I think Bruce and.
Oh, they're, they're online, okay.
Online.
Okay.
Do you wanna talk about the ADU updates?
Yeah, sure.
Why not? Um, I don't think this will take very long, we, we discussed this at, um, the last time we met, we discussed a number of changes and edits. I went ahead and made them, discussed them with building inspector, he was in agreement with those changes. Um, I put the new draft, both corrected track changes copy and a clean copy, um. If, I didn't know if, if this, if this draft is now to state that we're satisfied enough that we wanna take the next step, which maybe, maybe it's a workshop, maybe it's actually scheduling a public hearing, um, you know, I just wanted to make sure we were comfortable with that draft, um.
Do we have to bring this before the select board, before we go to the public hearing?
We don't have to, but, I mean, I'm sure it would be a great idea to.
To run it by him?
Yeah, see how they feel about it.
I have a question though, um, did the building inspector, I mean, I, I have talked to Jerry about this myself, well, I talked about it a while ago, um, but not lately, um, did he, did he have any concerns about whether or not, or how much this bylaw overlapped that, that the existing laws were? Because I know that was a concern he had before, he said, gee, there's a lot of existing laws that can protect some of this, um, but, you know.
I, I don't think so, because it doesn't, it doesn't kind of, um, doesn't overlap into how many kitchens you can have. It, it, it doesn't address what you can do in a very large house with a very large addition with multiple kinds of rooms. It doesn't address that at all, because can, it's its own thing, um, so, no, I, I don't think he had any concerns about this being, you know, repetitive of, say, the building code or anything else, um.
So, my, my other question is, is, um, there are a couple of places that brings up the annual renewal to, uh, for, um, somebody does this to, to say, to, to sign off, to say that they are living in the property, so that the owners are actually living in the property and that the, the ADU is the failed number of the word. How would that, is it, what is the method by which that would be accomplished? Because it sounds like you'd have to send a letter out, and somebody, it then becomes a job for somebody to send the letters out and get the letters back in, and then, and then see who responded, who didn't, and then what do you do if somebody does respond six months later? There's no teeth in it.
Right, there, and, and, I mean, I, I think the teeth would be.
Do we need to leave that?
Do we know how other towns?
Do we need to leave that condition in there, I mean, really?
Well, do we know how other towns have, have fared with it?
That's kind of, and then my next question.
So. Cause I've seen it in other towns.
It was, yeah, it, it's, it's language that was taken from some other towns' bylaws.
Six point zero.
I, I mean, it depends, you could approach it, I, I don't know that it necessarily requires, you know, the town to send a letter out, but it requires, the onus is on that property owner to send the letter every year, if that's a provision we wanna keep in there. But I think there was concern that what if, what if there are absentee landlords, what if people don't really stay there, even though they tell us they will once, and then who knows, you know, but asking someone to send a notarized letter every year as a condition of maintaining their legal unit, um, I think we felt was one way to ensure that people were really living there. Is it perfect? No, but the enforcement action can be pulling the special permit and not allowing the unit anymore, um.
Yeah, I think it shows a, a lack of wanting to comply, it gives Jerry one more tool, should, you know, there be issues with the, with the property, instead of just having no rules, then how do you enforce anything if there's no rules, you know?
Well, I, I understand that, but I, um, I'm just trying to think this all the way through, okay? It occurs to me that, have you ever tried to kick somebody out of the house, out of a piece of, a family living someplace out? It's not all that easy, right?
No, no, and I'm not.
So, you understand where I'm coming from, Jerry, and this is, this, this, I mean, I, I understand the intent of it, it all sounds like a good idea on paper, but somebody's gotta run that program, and then some, some level of enforcement, how you, you know?
I'd say enforcement.
It could get to be a sticky wicket.
I'd say enforcement, though, it's, it's just like having rules, like, here's a speed limit, whatever, does everybody go the speed limit? No, but if you needed to pull over somebody and they're over that speed limit, you know? It's the same kind of thing, it's just an enforcement tool, so, you, you might not, you might get sixty-five percent participation, seventy percent, maybe more higher, but at least there's a trail of someone not doing it, so if there is an issue, Jerry can point to, like, yeah, you haven't done this for three years, and, um, I mean, to me, it's like, what?
You're no longer living in the house.
What do you have to hide, and, and I, it gets back to the whole thing again, where, you know, we see towns around us which clearly have, like, unfettered kind of ADU rules and whatever, and you can, they have a different look to them, that's all I'm gonna say. And, so, we're embarking on this, and I'd rather walk, and then I'd rather be wrong right now, like, going too slow and be wrong, than just let them just go do whatever they want, and then you can't put it back in the box.
Yeah.
You know, because we can continually change and evolve, if we go too much.
We can take out.
You can't go backwards, to your point, have you ever tried to kick someone out? Have you ever tried to have someone take down their ADU because it's not right? That's a bigger problem, and I just, that's why I'd rather go really slow on this, and be very specific about, which Jerry seems to embrace, the, you, some of the, the adjacencies to property lines, that's my big thing, because I don't wanna bother the neighbor. It's up to you, you wanna have an ADU, if you can comply to all the rules, great, but this kind of slippery slope where, well, I've got a garage, and if I just connect them, now it's one house, and now I make that, that garage is four feet from the neighbor's property line, but I all comply because the planning board didn't, didn't get ahead of me, so now I have an ADU five feet from property line. Again, that's not fair to the next person, might be great for that person to add more living space, it's not fair to the other residents of North Reading that we're not protecting them, so, I'm trying to be super strict on this housing unit, like, have fun. If you can stay within all the setbacks and it looks just like the single house, go for it, but, like, having two homes on a lot or ones that stretch out to the lot lines, and in the accessory dwelling setback, which is up to ten feet, where it should be twenty-five to twenty in most residential zones, is not good, you know, and that's why I wanna be strict on it. I, I represent just me, but that's where I wanna be strict.
To ask a question, then, um, does the owner occupied requirement further those goals at all?
No, but I think it's kinda like saying, I'm just, my, my ADU bylaw is gonna be one sentence, you know, one, there's gonna be multiple, it's dimensional requirements, it's like, there's aesthetic requirements, I think we, this thing's a three sixty, and it mirrors, as Danielle said, it mirrors neighboring towns, towns around us, and it's not that far off-road from the state standards that we began with a year ago or so, we've just tried to, I think, rein it in a little bit for our first test in the waters, that's about all, I don't think, you know, these things could fall off the wayside as we find out, hey, you know, this is good and we've got, or we find a different way.
Well, if you can, if it's to the, more to the point, I mean, the, the practicalities of how is the town gonna manage an owner occupied annual certification process? I mean, does this town have the resources, do they wanna do that, do they, are they having a say in participating? And if they, if that becomes more trouble than it's worth, kind of thing, but if it is worth the trouble, can we do things like piggyback on, like, the town annual census, you know, put a checkbox in there? If I have an ADU, I hereby sign this, saying that, you know, I, I live there, maybe it's existing paperwork, I just got mine in the mail the other day. You know, with the check off, you have to check off if you have a dog or not.
Right.
You know? I gotta, I gotta notify the town.
And you're supposed to do that, too.
Yeah, no, I know.
You know, so we can piggyback on existing things like that, you know, that's already.
Right, if there's, if there's record of it.
So, what we have here is a, is a, basically, a bylaw. What you're talking about, in the bylaw is required, and then there's a way to get, to get to the requirements, what, what you're talking about, which is a great way to do it, simple, it doesn't really add too much to it, there's no extra mailings. The difference in that is it's not, it's not certified, you know, and they can come to town hall, is Debbie's certified, right? Do you charge when someone comes in for some, for town?
For notary?
For your certification, you know, you have to stamp it with your.
Notary.
Notary? This, how about, there's, there's one over on the other side, too, they don't, they don't. There are other people here, they don't charge for those things, because some do, but if it's, if it's private and personal, I can understand that, but if it's for the town, are they, are they notaries within the town itself, you know? Did they get that license because of town?
Yes, that's why I have.
Because the town required it?
Our office required, I.
And, and the town pays your dues, correct?
They pay, they pay for it.
Okay, so.
That's why I don't charge.
That's why you don't charge, so, there's, there's a way to do it for free, in other words, come down, when Debbie's here, you make a phone call. But, you know, this, and.
But how many are we talking about, too, I mean, that's the other thing we need to think about. Are we gonna have, you know, right now, we have about, well, we have two legal ones, and then the rest are illegal, so I don't know how many we have, but. Well, there are more than two?
I would say so.
I thought Debbie covered it.
Well, there used to be one on Swamp Pond Road, which is no longer.
Jerry said there's three.
Three, okay. Debbie said there was two, but, but either way, um, yeah, I ju, I'm just meaning, like, how many, there's, obviously, this would allow more people to do it, but I, I don't think it's, talking about, like, hundreds and hundreds, you know, I don't think it would be that great.
The question is, can, we, do we do the municipal census annually?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that might be a, a vehicle by which we could do it, but, uh, but again, anybody in the house could say, yeah, just check off the blocks, you know?
Yeah, so it's not really, it's, it's not, doesn't correlate back to really the bylaw.
It would be criteria.
So, that's how you'd have it, you have to fill out the census?
Your name is on that, too.
Yep.
The person's name is on that, if you move out of town, you're no longer on a census.
Maybe a way to skin that cat.
And that's, that's gonna be, that should be a red flag right there, there's an ADU, hey, I don't have that census form for that person that's supposedly living in that house.
Just, we just have to change that municipal, uh, census to put that question in there with the blocks to check, saying, you know, the census only was, it doesn't matter if you have an in-law or not, people that live better for us than law, the census. I know, I know it doesn't matter right now, but can we change it so that we can use it as a way to track?
Then you'd have to have different addresses, probably, often.
Have to have different what?
Have to have a different address for the in-law than the name, house.
No, 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 no.
I don't know.
I think they're the same, they have to be the same, at least on this one.
Same address.
And how are you gonna separate the census?
Well, you separate, well, because when the census. Well, you separate, well, because when the census comes in, they're gonna, for the, for the main house, but well, for either one of them. That's, okay, okay, so they have an ADU, so both families get a census paper. They both have on it, do you have an ADU? Person's living in it says no. The person that is, that owns the house and has the ADU says yes. And then it says, are you living in, you know, check the box?
But is there any, any rules governing census on what you can add to a census and...
I, I can ask the town clerk's office about that. I don't really know, but I certainly can ask.
If there's a signature on it, you have to sign this thing.
Yeah.
That, you're, you're legally bound there. If you lie, you signed a document that's false.
I mean, as, as we already said, I mean, if somebody, if it's their duty to annually recertify, and they're not doing it themselves, we're still gonna have somebody have to chase them down or something like that.
I wouldn't say chase them down, it's when we, when we find there's something wrong, you have that record that they're not filing. That's all, I'm, there's no, no one's gonna get chased down. It's just you have that record, they've never, ever complied with the rules. And so, that gives Jerry some more teeth if he's going for, they're going for a building permit, they're going to expand it. Who knows? He's able to say that...
But the other way, you won't, you don't have to be on census forms if you don't register to vote, um, and they don't know that you're looking at that address or not.
Yeah, so I don't know. I'm not, just me personally, I'd rather just have it part of the bylaw instead of have it part of the, call it the method or the manner in which you do this.
You gotta have, you gotta have the regulations around the bylaw.
If you leave it as part of the bylaw, you need to, like, you need to some extent to be able to put in some kind of a mechanism by which you, you check for, um, complicity with it.
Yeah, and it would be, again, if the residence pulls a permit of any form or is trying to, you know, any kind of, you could, you could even have related to taxes, you know? So, you're not fi, you're not filing your report, so you need to do that.
The, the regulatory personnel...
I think, though, I start with...
From the selectmen, select board anyways, because they're the ones that are in charge of the rest of the...
Yeah, they can come up with maybe some input on this, but I would check with the other towns that have this, that are ahead of us, that already have this and find out what...
Good to find out.
That, to me, is more...
I still think we should, we should send this off to Mike and have him circulate into the select board.
Are portraying it.
So, they can see it? Is there any other, do you have any other issues except for line six on this? I mean, real issues?
Me?
No, no, I, I'm talking about the board, cause I'm, I'm gonna ask, Danielle could just send this to Mike?
Yeah.
The, the TA. He can circulate that to the select board.
As, as Jerry told me before, a lot of the stuff that's in there is stuff that basically, you know, the same as the state law. You know, you have to do things correctly, have to pull permits, da, 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 da. And, you know, that was the one thing that I, that, that the ability to comply for somebody, or, or the willingness for people to comply with it without, without some kind of a mechanism to help them comply, it's, it's gonna, you know, you better... You know, and I, I said, if you have a huge speed limit sign there, it means a thousand people could be speeding and nobody's ever gonna do anything about it, you know?
Yeah, but you can, you know, and you do. I think everybody in this room's gotten a ticket before, right? I have, I've gotten a few.
Been a long time, a long time since I've gotten one of those.
Sixty years, but I'm just saying. But, um, the, the other one, too, Danielle, that it could be kind of a back to a Jerry kind of question, though, is the amnesty thing. Is, I think we have to be clear about like what, cause if you have this, this ADU that's in, in no way complies with our, our rules, our way of doing it or whatever, I'm using the word, let's just, it's just not, it's not, it's, they just went off, off-road and did their own ADU. So, what makes it, what makes the town accept that? So, we have to have some sort of rules to that.
Well, I think that wouldn't necessarily be part of the bylaw. Like, the bylaw should just be what we are requiring for correct ADUs. Now, I think if the building department wants to, and they probably would, they can run, they can have a policy where they can run an amnesty program. And they can see, um, if something can be brought up to the current standard. I just don't know, there might be a way to word that in the bylaw.
It would just more just...
Yeah, that's like a rule regulation.
It's more of a policy than a...
It's a policy, but...
Bylaw.
I would, I'd want it as an agreement between departments that you're gonna do this because, you know, this is what I would, I don't want to see is that people knowing that there's gonna be a bylaw soon, rush, go build there, non-compliant, like totally different, not acceptable, all the stuff that we talked about a few weeks back.
And then they get it.
And then, right as, you know, they just wait, they just run under amnesty and say, I got an ADU now.
No, I think amnesty is only for people who comply with the bylaw. If you don't comply, you don't get amnesty.
You should comply with the bylaw.
You're just trying to get whether it's for real estate reasons or whatever other, an extra bedroom or do something to make your property more valuable, whatever, um, that, and you're just trying to get in on the amnesty thing.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna be approved.
Yeah.
Can't they also put in like a date? So, once...
It would be the date as of approval of the zoning bylaw, right?
We're, we're now talking about this.
Mm-hmm.
So, if they can't get amnesty from this date forward, because they should just wait something happens with this bylaw.
It's hard, though, I think Danielle's right, it has to be from the date, but of, of the adoption of it. But I think, though, it's more about the strictness of, you, it's, it's, you'll just, in the town, we've survived up to this point, you will just continue to have an illegal ADU. Like, I'm comfortable with that. It'll, see, there might, they might not be because what they're wanting to try to do is get it so that they can list it as an extra bedroom or apartment, all this kind of stuff, the legal, but they can't. If, if it's not legal, they can't. So, I think just if they don't comply with, and Jerry can give them a pathway to get there. But, but if they're five feet from a property line, hey, cause they convert, they, you know, converted a garage that's connected to the house and, you know, I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have sympathy for that. It's like you, you kind of cut corners and you did it and, you know, right now, the bylaw doesn't support that.
I do think that an amnesty program, if we have one, would need to really be at the discretion of the building department and not in the, because if we put something into the zoning bylaw that mentions amnesty, that then, the building department should be able to decide whether or not that's acceptable to them and under what conditions and for how long. I think putting that in a bylaw is too, it's, it's too set in stone. It doesn't give them the flexibility they need to say amnesty over...
I just wanna, I wanna know his opinion on it, that's all, like how he would go about doing it.
Yeah, I think we had talked at one point about it being a building department policy. I don't know for how long or how they would implement it, but I, I can, I'll, I'll go back and just get that feedback from Jerry, what, what he thinks he would do about amnesty, but I, I think it's really tough to put it in the bylaw itself. Do you want, um, that draft to be sent to the town administrator for the select board interview?
I think the next step is just to, to get it to the select board, let them...
I, I still have a couple of things, I think, you know, to go over with, so.
Do you want me to then put it on the next agenda and we can talk through those last issues? Okay, we can do that. Okay.
That's fine. You're not ready yet.
Ryan's not either, he's never here for, every time there's an ADU discussion, Ryan, no, he's never here. And he's got the exact same opinion as me, so.
If I, if I'm...
Go ahead, Warren.
Correct, if you, uh, when you get a special permit of some kind from the Board of Appeals, for example, or variance from the Board of Appeals, that is on a one-year basis, they do bring you back in on that one year.
Somebody has to follow it, I think, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, they do, well, they do, they follow it and they send you out, say, yo, if you'll come back in for your reapproval or your approval, you know, expires.
Expires.
So, so there's a, there's a process that they have in place to do that.
Right.
So, to have a ruling like this, no process.
Yeah, well, right. Problem is, you know, the, the, you gotta have the bylaw and then write the process behind it, just like we've done that before.
Well, what you're saying, your process is to put it on the census, right?
Well, I mean, that was just one of the ways of getting it out to every single house and, and having the opportunity for them to, to say without having to drag them down here, have to fill out a piece of paperwork.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not in an argument with that, like, like I said, I think...
So, what would be the process, that, that's the question.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, but that's not for us to, that's not for us to write, I don't think.
Yeah, or it's, that, that one's ready to go, too, if you will, the select board or whatever. That, that question and that idea in others' ways to do it, I'm not objecting to that at all. Like, find a way, I was just saying that, I think the rule is a good rule and we haven't really spoke to other towns to find out if it's, hasn't worked at all.
See how they work it. All right, well, it's eight thirty-seven. Are there any more super questions? Otherwise, we're gonna end this discussion and go on to our... I guess it's a public, public hearing? One forty-six, one fifty, senior housing overlay district, public hearing.
Who's doing it, sir?
We got Peter. Want to stand here or want to sit here?
Sit with that mic, speak into the mic, sir, please. And let us know who is, you're here. And I can see Peter, hi, Peter. Can you hear me?
Good evening.
Good evening. Who else is in your, uh... There we go. All right, so...
Thank you, if I may.
On the floor.
Bruce is gonna be a little late, he's, uh, be joining us by his room, he's tied up in Snow White, if anyone know the matter. Uh, but, uh, we, one of our knowledge, we received the peer review report. Uh, there's been a constructive discussion between the project engineer and your peer reviewer. Ace has been working on the plans, is, is working on a response. And we're looking to hopefully be able to wrap this up and, and close the public hearing, get you a next session, if that seems appropriate. There have been some planned changes and what we're gonna ask, if Peter could give a brief outline of the civil engineering part of it. Uh, and then we're gonna ask Larry to describe a couple of minor project changes. Uh, and then we'll answer any questions you may have and look to continue to be able to finalize the peer review aspect of it. Thank you. Peter, wanna make your comments?
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it, Dave.
I can hear, Debbie?
Yes.
Yeah?
Go ahead, Peter.
First of all, I thank the board for the opportunity to address this evening remotely, as we don't have a lot done. It seems like it would have been more convenient for our, our team. Um, we did receive the GM two peer review report on January twelfth and, uh, provided a written response to them on, uh, January nineteenth. Uh, since that time, we had an opportunity to be face to face with them, discuss, uh, open issues. And I can't speak to them, but I think that we've pretty much come to terms on everything that we needed to do. And I might say that they had some good suggestions relative to the plan, we have made some changes, uh, most of them quite minor, I think. The biggest one was they pointed out the difficulty of, uh, constructing a wall by the, uh, police station. And we decided to increase that height and move it back so that it doesn't create any issues. Uh, there were some additions that they wanted to the plan and they actually asked us to rerun the hydraulics with the new, uh, uh, intensities, new storm intensities that are now being used. We've done, done that, um, and done it all back to them. But we understand that the board cannot close the, uh, hearing until they receive a written report from the consultants. So, uh, rather than, uh, discuss in detail any news issue, we thought that it would be better to, uh, give you an update. And, uh, uh, you know, uh, any questions that we have, hopefully, in the next meeting. Uh, we also have, since the, your last meeting, had a field visit with the conservation commission on the twenty-first, last Saturday. And, uh, I can't speak to the commission, but I think that they were fairly satisfied with what they saw. And I hope that Danielle could, uh, kinda touch base with Lee or, and see how that, and those issues might be brought to a close as well. Uh, we have, we had to put up a plan, if you're interested in, uh, looking at any particular aspect of it. Uh, and Joe Bill, my assistant, is, uh, on, ready to do that if necessary. I think that's all we got for direct presentation from an engineering standpoint. And I know that Larry, the, uh, project architect, has, he thinks he wanted to add. Is he there, Larry?
All right, go ahead, Larry.
Hi, I am.
You're on.
Okay. Uh, and, and just out of, hello, everyone. Good to see everybody again. Is, uh, is it, is the screen sharing, uh, enabled here? It looks like it is. Let's see, I'm, uh, a little here. For reference, we, we, uh, not, nothing major happening, but just wanted to essentially, um, put on record some, some minor changes that we're doing with materials, really, uh, really at the rear of the building. Uh, this, this is the, the front elevation, really the most visible sides of, from, uh, Hart Street. And there's actually not, not anything that we're doing on those that have changed from, I think, the last submission package. And then, uh, it, as well, this is, this, uh, this wing of the building is, um, not affected. This is, this is actually the area that you, essentially is visible from the road as well, from, from the east. This small piece of, uh, knuckle, is, is the, the knuckle at the joint where the building stands on the side of the building. And on, uh, let's see, I'll put this guy over, the, the southern extension of the east side elevation, uh, we have achieved a bit from the previous, uh, submission. So, amassing here a little bit, just on the third floor, uh, we brought up some, some root lines here to help us with some, some gymnastics of, of, you know, layouts and such. And a special note, though, this, this is actually seeing family back on the site. So, there's, there's very little visibility from the road in any way, uh, just, just as a reference. Clarify, uh, I kinda clarified some materials down at the lowest level to get back to kind of this, this corner. And get to then the rear views of the building. As you come around that end of the building, you have some exposed concrete. I don't know if that actually starts really keeping that of concrete, but then we will drop the wall down. Do a, a, a base, uh, sighting element, more of a shiplap work, uh, as we come along out in that, that rear courtyard area. These two faces, the south rear elevation and the west rear courtyard elevation are, are the, uh, the fully private side of the building, there's no visibility from pretty much anywhere, I think. But we are, we come down a driveway to this end. We have some brick that wraps around the back, to the back. And then our materials change, we have a whole wood, wood-framed, uh, wall, uh, above our, our garage level. So, and, and along with some sort of material clarification, this side, I wanted to note that, um, other than really the, the doors, uh, sure the, the exit doors have appeared, maybe the door here. And then our, um, community room, that's actually behind the section of walls here. The, the rear view, I mean, this would actually be a, uh, open grill, uh, for ventilation. For our garage level, that, that lowest level is our garage. We'll be using some natural ventilation by, by treating those windows with, with a, with a, uh, grill system. But that, that's our, that's our change, is the majority of passing them all, really above this, this first floor line around the whole perimeter, the bill, very little has changed, uh, almost, almost nothing. And so, again, it's just been this, these two root lines, uh, for those two sections has, uh, been developed to, to reflect the, uh, the three-story elements that we do have. been developed to, to reflect the, uh, the three story elements that we do have in various locations. Beyond that, uh, what really is is the lower level, which is getting clarified and updated, having updated guidelines. And sent those, the files of the, of the reference. Sent them as needed to, uh, anyone just for official record. That's it for me for the one, if you have any questions, glad to answer.
I just have a question, Larry. Those, the three, they, they appear to be hip roofs, is that how you change? That, is there, is there a reason why you went backwards into the gable with the hip versus just go with the full gable? Like that seems to be more what the rest of the design has?
Well, the, um, our, our challenge was with, um, let's see. Yeah, I can, let's see if I can pull up, um.
You know what I'm talking about?
These.
Free.
Yeah.
That's a hip roof, it's not a gable.
Right. If I take the position so we can now see them together, or should say, compare them to some degree. So this, this is what we had in those areas previous, so everything on either side of these verticals is, is exactly the same, uh, so, so we have changed this patch, uh, massing on the third floor. And what, what that did is we're, we're looking closer at our, uh, our, our unit layouts and, uh, and the valuations of those and the complexity of some root lines and working everything out. And it, it, this new configuration solves some, some pretty serious concerns we have about the, uh, the layout of, of units there. The, really the biggest challenge is getting, uh, getting space into that, the gable, uh, sort of reduced area that, that was caused by the gable treatment. And, and I think, you know, we, we, of course, we like this, this gable approach to it, but as, as we get back to this section of the building, we are actually seeing, if I was to look up in the back on the site, it's, uh, I think the proportions that happen here, it, it, the, the front section of the building and the rear section of the building, actually bringing these, these three story elements very nicely. And, and actually does kind of reflect the, the real space that's going on in the, that's, that's our, our reason.
Does Larry, does the, in the image below, the elevation below, it shows those three gables, or I'm sorry, those three hip, hips going over the main ridge of the roof, is that, uh, is it the same roof that we're seeing above on that image? And if so, wouldn't we see the roofs picking up over the ridge?
Um, let's see, so we, yeah, the, um, relative heights, um, because this, this joint is essentially this one. So, so the root line on both sides of that, at this knuckle gable that, that happens here on the end of the, the view. You know, our, our, I didn't follow this in here, I see these, uh, new roof sections, but, uh, but these do read more like, uh, so just, just transverse root lines down into the, uh, I don't know if that helps.
Well, I don't, I don't know if it, it would help, but do you have that, do you have available to you the rendering? So you could actually see more of an isometric or 3D view?
Yeah, I don't have that area, but I think maybe we would get to see, um,
I just want to see how those massings change the look really.
To the roof line.
It picked up a lot, it looks like it picked up a lot of floor space.
Yeah, and you just said two, I mean, one of the things, those two gables.
For windows and, and being able to separate the unit up.
Yeah, but also, yeah, but also because of the raisins up and opening that up.
Yep.
It's more floor space.
Also the, the way it was.
Useful, that's right.
It would dump snow down into those.
Yeah, yeah.
The railing system.
Let's see. It's not really easy to, uh, zoom in here a little bit, so you can see the type of relationship of, of the root lines adjacent. So this is the same exact hip, hip, three story hip element showing on those other elevations. This is down on our courtyard. That we have, we have a low slope roof coming down and tying in our hips, uh, really read as dominant elements so that it, it's not just, just a facade from, from that front view. It, it reads like transverse, uh, root lines down in this hip roof. I don't think that's, that's the same, same exact approach that we're using. I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, somewhat, I mean, if that's, if that's the scale in massing that is used in the back, I, I get it. It just, it seems like the, it's a lot less roof we're looking at in that image, uh, that rendering than in, say, the elevation that we are showing. It seemed like the roof is much bigger, more tailored.
It looks like it's, it's, the ridge is taller than the main ridge. If that's what you're talking about.
But again, you know, we're, I'm not sure how much, you know, we're going to debate this tonight, but I, it'd just be interesting to see the before and the after. If there's a way to see that. And it doesn't have to be, right now, because somebody just forward, um, for the next meeting, so we can have a discussion about it. I don't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I, I think, um, well, this is, this is definitely, um, it's important to kind of get, get a sense of what the difference is between these, um, so, you know, it really is, um, is, is this double gable element with one three story piece versus the three, um, the series of three, which are, are each slightly different, um, as, as you go down. This, this, this element actually has a, let's see. A little bit here. It does have a smaller, more of a tower element popping out from it, uh, here. Which, which also worries up the sort of, uh, regularity of, of those elements. But like, you know, I think, I guess, uh, kind of the question, question would be kind of our, our hierarchy of our root lines as much as anything.
Yeah, it just moves it more from kind of the classic New England gable type structures that, that everyone really liked to see originally. And it just alters it, for me at least. And, um, I, again, I just would want to see the before and after. And then with context, I mean, that's where the model could help because, to your point, these might be in the rear. Um, it's, it's less important maybe, I, I don't want to just wave that off, though, I mean, there's, there's properties in the rear somewhere, but, uh,
It's a gravitation, so it's a river.
But, uh, anyways, uh, that's all I'm saying, it's just be interesting to see the before and after of it. Uh, there could be potential to tweak it a little bit, just to. And also I have to apologize, I'm, I'm looking at a screen, you know, fifteen, twenty feet away and I'm not picking up every little detail. So perhaps, uh, you know, I'm missing some of the detail that, uh, you okay?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, you know, on some of the, um, I just.
Do you see what I'm drawing?
A little quick, you want something that's, that's, that's a difference here as well with the, the, uh,
It's a pror, that's for sure.
Really use up in, in between the, the, uh, the, the towers, so to call it. We actually have kind of a darker, typically we're using a darker shingle treatment, a natural dark, um, on the majority of those. So I, I think that's something that would make a difference, just that I, I have it as white here, but they really should be in, um, the shingles. And so for some, which really would help also kind of change the, the, the scale or, you know, these are, the, the bits of these, we, we range twenty-eight, thirty-two feet on three story elements like this for the different roofs. So they're, they're actually, you know, the scale is very much standard house size.
Right.
So I think, you know, that's the, that's hard to kind of tell though, you know, in here. Like you're saying, it's, it's, uh, it, it gets challenged. But the, the whole run, I mean, I know that, this is a reference from this point, which is sort of where we began both versions of this. This point to the front corner of this building, which is here, is, uh, it's almost a hundred feet. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a significant distance back from the road. Right now, uh, I don't believe you can see any of this much your way back on the site. You know, the, the adjacent sites, uh, looking at, at the, from the road, I don't know if you can see this, this area of building at all.
Did anybody crop?
That said, I don't want the other leave, so that's, uh, I think this is, this was a, a, I think a nice sort of balance of elements, I think, that would reflect these, these three three story hip pieces with, with gable elements. They're more two and a half story to each side of this. So the balance of it seems to feel very nice. So we can, uh, if, if needed, we can do additional, uh, rendering or something that, that maybe could show the, uh, kind of the difference between the two of an appropriate of location.
Yeah, or just if you would, uh, because I don't think this was in the documents that we have in our folder, just send us, uh, these images or send to Danielle. Um, then obviously on a computer I can zoom in, like everyone can see it a little bit better. Be happy to do that.
Do you have any questions? Warren, do you have any other questions?
Do you have any, I have questions for Peter, but I didn't want to, while we have Larry and they have the rendering.
Just saying.
Do you have any architectural question?
Yeah, go, go ahead.
Go ask your questions for Peter then, Dave.
So Peter, I mean, again, I know you're, you're working with GM two, but, um, I was, I was curious on the question though, on the, the, well, first the flow test. So did you, did DPW flow for you or did you guys flow, and what hydrant did they use to flow it from, the one down near the police station? Okay.
The, uh, the flow test was done by the DPW and it was some years ago, but I, I talked to Mark Clark. And he said that there is essentially, nothing has changed in that area and it's the water right in front of the police station. Uh, the water line actually changed, and Joe, maybe you could put that plan up. The water line changes from a ten inch, which comes down from the, uh, the tower, interestingly enough, is on Tower Road or, uh, that area. It's, it's a ten inch line, so it's very strong to that point and then it goes from there to an eight inch line. Maybe you could point out, Joe, with that, with the rest.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
What's your opinion on that? So Warren, just pointing, I'm sorry.
Go up a little further with the plan. Oh, that's down, or up, whichever way is. That's behind it right there, that's in front of the police station.
Yep.
And, uh, the, the, uh, water line itself changes from a little bit up there from a, a ten to an eight.
Right in front of McLean, I think.
But that height would certainly be used to fight a fire here. The, the front line, there's plenty of flow here, where, where a direct connection to the water tower.
So Peter, though, what, what do you say though to the, and I'm, I, I don't have printed out in front of me the comments. You had back to the split of the services, how you have it coming in on one service, one six inch service and splitting?
Eight inch.
I have not talked to, uh, Mark Clark about that, there's two ways to approach that. Uh, you, you come in, we came in with one eight inch.
It splits to six fire.
Six and two.
Off of, uh, the eight inch line. Goes eight inch, duck the line, and then we split to a six inch fire and a two inch domestic with separate gates. Uh, sometimes they like to have you do that all the way from the street, and if he wants to do that, we could do it. It seems redundant to me and one of the things that I think is important is, um, it keeps, because the domestic is tied to that line, it keeps flushing that line through the domestic flow. So you don't get a poor water quality in it, but, um, I have not talked to, um, Mark Clark about that.
That's a, that's a good point though, Peter, about the flow. Because it's a little bit, you know.
You know, if, if they want to change it, I mean, and, and the whole building that I, that I built myself in Wakefield, we did it that way. Um, and I think it works very well, unless, and I like that you got domestic, domestic flow and you got a major congregation going on, so.
I think though, for the design, you know, for the building department, you're, you're going to need a new flow test though, for, for them to stamp that, set it around, they're not going to go off. Flow test.
But we did, uh, this is not the time to hear to do a flow test.
You're right, Peter.
Peter, I thought you were ahead of the game though and got it done in the fall. Yeah, usually they won't let you do and not go wrong sometimes.
Yeah, but, but when I talked to Mark Clark about it when we were designing this exhibit, plenty of flow here. I'm sure that the sprinkle people are going to want to see an up to date test, I think that test was fifteen years ago. But Mike pointed out when he sent it along, that there is nothing really that's changed in that, in that regard.
Yep, okay. Uh, what other question do I have?
He's got a sticky, Peter, you're in trouble.
No, no.
What's that?
Just looking.
He has a sticky paper, no paper.
I'm just looking at my notes, you kind of answered some of them though. But, uh, Peter, I'm just curious too, on the, on the NOAA stuff, the fourteen, is that, is that, you, you guys correctly say that this is not, you know, we're not using those right now? But is that, is that going to be adopted, is that why, is that why the peer reviewer and civils are kind of taking on that rainfall data now?
A lot of people are using it now, um, it's not going to be adopted by the E P. In a situation like this, and in most situations, uh, you're, you're increasing the, uh, the, uh, the total flow, but you're increasing it in the existing as well. Particularly on a site like this where it's mildly paved, um, you end up with not much difference, it's just a, a greater total flow. The process to change the outlet pipe from a twelve to a fifteen, uh, Joe's pointing that out now.
Yep.
But, uh, I can't answer whether the state's going to go with that or not, I mean, I, I don't know. Uh, I, I, I guess the weather's more extreme, it seems like it more still these days, but.
Okay, thank you, Peter, for the tie.
The state hasn't funded it yet, some cities and towns have, I don't believe, Los Grays has, but, um, if we're asked to use those numbers, it's just changing the rainfall data in the, in the hydraulic study.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Danielle, you have any questions?
No.
Jeremiah? Warren? Okay. So.
One other question for, for Danielle, so in the, in the GM two, is, are there any departments that need to speak to? So police department above the wall, Mark, I guess, DPW about the water. So are they getting you, is that how that works with the peer review? They get you that information, like it becomes a department letter or email?
GM two will give us a final letter assum- assuming there are no outstanding issues left. Um, if there are any outstanding issues left and they put that in the letter, then I'll follow up with those departments, so we'll all connect them. Um, and then I also go back to our previous memos. And then I also go back to our previous memos and I look back to see if other departments still had outstanding questions that weren't addressed as part of this. So I'll be doing that over the course of the next week and then I can prepare a draft decision letter for next time. That's what you'd like to plan on.
Hi Bruce, do you have anything to add?
You on mute?
You're muted, Bruce. How you guys doing? Great to see you.
Good to see you, Bruce.
Good to see you too. So we have to pick a date.
Um, I have a quorum question and I actually realized I might need to check on attendance for the last few hearings. I want to make sure we haven't lost the ability to have Ryan vote. I just, if he's missed more than one meeting than we have, so I, and I know that at the next meeting.
Yeah, you'll know that, but.
He won't.
I won't be here, so, so Bruce, we've got a meeting on February the 28th, we've got one on the 7th too, correct? And we have our normal March meeting on March the 7th. I'm going to be in Savannah on the 28th. Hopefully I'll be zooming in, but for sure I'll be here on the 7th in town. So the question is, do you want to shoot for the 28th or is it going to hurt you for an extra seven days going to the 7th?
Well, it's not so much the extra seven days, but I have a, I have a conflict on the 7th, I have another hearing.
Okay.
So, and that's what, what, what got, I, I thought I was going to have enough time to clean tonight and I did. So I wanted to try to avoid having that, these, these two things going at the same, the same, the same night. So the 28th would be better, and, and, for me, I don't think I can make the 7th, so you can't do the 28th, but you have to do it next day.
All right, I mean, we can, I could try to zoom in, I'll just have to wait and get a phone call from Danielle if they need me.
Bruce, the next meeting is March 7th.
March 7th, did I say the date or something?
Oh, we have February 7th and we have March 7th, so I think he said he couldn't do the 28th.
No, I, I thought he couldn't do. So Bruce, what meeting can you not make?
He said the March 7th.
March 7th. Is that correct?
Yeah, I can't make the March 7th.
Okay, you can make the 28th though.
I can.
Okay. So let's continue with the 28th. Do we want to do it eight or later?
Let's do it at eight.
Because we got, we got Anthony Road thing. Have you given anybody a time on that, Debbie? She shakes her head no.
We could do.
We could do the eight.
The only thing is if we end up having to continue, start at 8:30 for the other, I wonder if we should do like eight and 8:15? Or we could do eight and 8:15.
Yeah, you could do that, you could do the other one at eight and just, you know, wait till the, once it's over.
Yeah, we could, let's do, let's do maybe eight and 8:15, that way we're not waiting too late if one's.
Eight o'clock? Good.
Eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock. So we're, so Bruce, we'll continue to eight o'clock, February the 28th.
That's terrific.
All right, we're going to do it as a, we'll do it as a zoom in.
So, so not February 7th?
Not February.
Okay.
Not February 7th.
And not March 7th, but February 28th, okay, got it.
My February 28th.
Got it.
Get me confused. I'm too confused.
Do you have, do you have a meeting on February 7th as well?
We do.
We do.
I could do the February 7th also.
Okay, would that be better? Wait, Warren will be here.
You won't be here. So Warren's been at everyone, David's been at everyone.
That's right, and we do need Warren.
So you're not going to zoom, you're not going to be able to zoom in from where you are.
Most likely not.
You're, you're going to be at C. So I have a better chance of zooming in if needed. On the 28th, so. All right, so we'll go that way. We'll go that way. You know, this is, this is my first time I'm away from North Ready for an extended period of time. So, all right, so eight o'clock, February the 28th. Do we need to do a continuance, a motion?
I've got it here.
You have one? Mr. Jeremiah, please.
I move that the community planning commission vote to continue the public hearing for 146, 150 Park Street until Tuesday, or Tuesday, February 28th, 2023, 8:00 p.m.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing then, all those that favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Which one you want to pick?
Eight o'clock.
The, the, no, the goal's seconded.
Oh.
Pierce.
Mr. Pierce, sorry.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian.
We're good, thank you very much, gentlemen. Thanks, thanks for visiting us.
Thank you. Hope it can work with you, Brad.
He was here at least. He was early too. That's it.
I'm scared and I have to also go back to see if he's missed any other meetings.
What else do we have?
Heard this, because the business is not on one. Right, I'm, I'm sitting on the.
We did that. We went through that, we did this, we did this, and we did that. So we're good. Good night, Peter.
Oh, you know, we also need to just double check, Jeremiah, have you missed any, or actually, has anyone missed any of the, I'll, we'll go back and check.
I haven't missed any.
You haven't missed any?
David and Warren, you haven't missed any either, right? So they've got them all.
Okay.
I've got them all.
I want to be sure if anyone needs to listen to a tape that they.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, honestly couldn't tell you.
Let's just check.
I'll check, okay.
We'll check to make sure it's right.
Okay.
But all you have to do, if you're not going to have quorum of this issue, just call me.
Yeah, yeah.
Or David can't, because he'll have my number too.
What's the rule, you can, you can miss what?
One.
One meeting and you can make it up by watching.
And, and reviewing all the materials from that meeting.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
We do like to stay above board. Don't mess around with that at all.
It's more like if it disposses all my children or whatever. If you want to catch up to where you are.
Yeah.
Where you are.
So, all right, so you're going to, you'll check on that, correct?
Yes.
I'm sure the three of us are good to go.
We, we need four.
I know, I know. So we're hoping Jeremiah, we're hoping Jeremiah has all of his.
Yeah.
I think he was on, on Zoom for one of them.
Okay.
One or maybe two of them.
We'll check. And Brad did not think that Ryan missed more than one, so I'll, I'll double check.
I think Ryan missed one.
One, but, but meeting tonight.
The meeting tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I'll.
I think he was on Zoom for the other meetings, as I recall. But my memory is on these, these kind of things are not always.
We'll just try.
Yeah.
Me too.
I don't know where that came from, just got a, got a yawn.
A little oxygen you drank? You, you burned it all up thinking about those drawings.
Am I right though?
No, no, no.
They changed.
No, no, they, it changed, yeah. But.
I know, I know we're not here to discuss it because it's closed, but I'm just saying they did change, they're definitely different.
But you're the one to look at that too. You can see that stuff better than we can.
But I just think though, I would have liked to see those documents, if they gave all those documents, it would have been nice to, if you got them, because that would have at least given them time. For all I know, they, it looks fine, it's just, it's the first time you're being thrown at it.
It looks like those hips are above the main roof.
It does, and that's, that's an important thing. They can't be because of the height restriction.
It's almost like it's 2D, that's the problem.
Yes, Debbie.
It's like you're standing on the ground and looking up.
Right, if you're, if you're, if that's what he was doing, the main ridge is going to be lower than the, than those.
Yeah.
And the comment, like it's in the back.
We, we should.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yes, we're done.